Call this meeting to order. Ryan, are you ready? You are ready? Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Susan Edmondson.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Here.
Ashley Jones.
Here.
Billy King.
Here.
Kim York.
Here.
Kim Bailey.
Here. I'd like to welcome our new board members. We've got Billy King and Ashley Jones to the board, and I want to have a moment of silence for Lance Hayes, if you'd join me. Thank you, and I'd like to thank the community for all their support of that family. If you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'd like to read our mission statement, "Preparing each student for a successful and meaningful life." Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. We are now on recognitions.
All right. At this time, it is my pleasure to recognize some of our students for their outstanding accomplishments, and we now have what I would consider a bit of a dynasty happening with our three-on-three Special Olympics team. In basketball, they seem to do exceptionally well every year, and this year is no exception. We've got multiple teams we're gonna recognize tonight. Not sure exactly how many of the students could make it, but we're glad of those who could be here. I also wanna recognize Coach Hornbeck and one of the volunteer coaches, Emma Hallett, for their effort to support this group. Thank you, ladies, for all that you've done, as well as other volunteers that help with our program. So at a recent state tournament, we had multiple teams, multiple categories, and so we're gonna do some recognitions this evening. We're gonna start out with Team Skills, and we had a third-place Team Skills bronze medal. And as I call your name, please come forward, and Susan Edmondson will give you your certificate, and we'll take a quick photo once we're all up here. First is Owen Vaughn. If you'll just stand there, Owen, we'll get some friends up here. Next is Mallory Anderson. She may come up with some of her friends later. We'll give her a chance here in just a second. Next is Sabrina Peak. We're all friends here. Next up is Sarah Poe. And I don't know if I'll say it right, Grant Ewigman. Does Mallory wanna come up? I tell you what, we're gonna take a picture up here, and then if it's okay, she'd rather do one in the back of the room. We could do that one afterwards. So we'll get a quick photo with the squad. All right, great job, guys. All right, our next team is the three-on-three Unified Panthers team. They received a second-place silver award. And just to kinda share with you, the Unified Teams are teams that include Special Olympians plus some volunteer players that help facilitate the game, if you will. I don't think they get to shoot or do anything fun like that, but they get to help with the team. As I call your name, please come forward. Emery in yellow. This young lady is here, Emma Gudenkauf. She's a veteran now, at this point. Kayla Hughes. Kayla here. Josh Hill. How about Tyler Williams? Or Sean Courtney. Is Sean here? Nope, okay. Emma, you're a star tonight. Thank you, Emma. All right, the next team is the three-on-three Unified Wolves team, which are middle-school-age students, and they received a first-place gold medal. First up on the list is one of our Unified Partners, Grant Hornbeck. Another partner is Olivia Burton. Next up is Armin Davis. How about Jaquan Blackman? Next up is Dorico Hilliard. How about Jag Davis? No pressure, but when you went in middle school, they expect you to kinda keep winning sometimes, so. All right, and then finally, we have our three-on-three Super Senior Team, which are high-school students and beyond. Not sure how many are here tonight, but let's see. First of all, Alex Sutton. How about Tristan Holmes? How about Zach Anderson? Zach is one of our Unified Partners. How about Ethan Ankrum? How about Ashley Lindsay? Des Rae Yarger? Alyssa Woodward? So these are our Unified Partners for the squad. Why don't you tell them what you do as your job as Unified Partner? Give us a headline. I bet it's a rewarding experience. All right. Thanks for your effort, guys. Thanks again to our coaches and volunteers that help us throughout the year. It's really an exciting event, and I got to see them practicing there one night, and lots of energy. Energy and excitement, and really a great opportunity for our student-athletes. We have one other recognition we wanna do tonight as part of our program, and that is to recognize some of the lead volunteers for the Proposition RP Committee. And we had a great leadership committee that kinda helped make that all happen. I know not all of them could be here this evening, but if you are here, please come forward. First, we have our chairman, Eric Collins, who I did not see arrive yet. He was out of town today, so Eric may not be here. Our next person, Phil Van Dusen, is here. Phil, come on up. Kathy Wansing is also here this evening. All right, and then we have Kurt and Melinda Howdyshell, who cannot be here this evening because they are at the visitation. But they were very active as well, as were Paul Kaufman and Kim Bailey, as board members on the committee. And there were many volunteers throughout the district, whether it's PTA groups or parents and faculty and staff throughout the district, the entire board. It was a tremendous effort collectively to get the word out about Proposition RP, and our volunteers did a great job to help spread that word. So why don't the two of you get in the middle, and we'll take a quick photo? That concludes our recognition portion of the program, and you are all welcome to stay for the entire meeting if you'd like. It's a nice, long agenda this evening, but you're also free to leave. If you'd like to do so, you can do so at this time. Thank you all for being here. We appreciate it very much. For the rest of our audience, we are having some technical difficulties with the projectors this evening, so we will be following our agenda on our computers. And those of you that are here, there's an agenda in the back of the room as well that you can follow along with.
We are now on the consent items. Is there a motion to approve the consent items? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
And thank you for getting the modular sold.
Yes. Pam, did anyone sign up for public comments?
Not tonight.
Thank you. We are now on informational items. We're on Library Media Program Review by Dr. Crystal Barr.
And Dr. Hoffman.
Oh, and Dr. Hoffman. Oh, yes, sorry.
Good evening. So tonight is our Library Program Review. Our team members for this program review included administrators such as Dr. Volker, Dr. Hoffman, and myself, and then it also included a librarian from each of our grade spans. So Heather Poland, who's from Eagle Glen Elementary, Nikki Brewer, who's from East Middle, and then Teresa Kentz, who's our high-school librarian, all participated in this. They are our exec council members, and so we kinda have a guiding council that then helps work with us on this, and PD and things like that for the librarians as a whole. So as far as our program impact, a major part of the Library Media Center is to be able to help students and teachers in their ability to access research materials, just free reading materials, things that complement the curriculum. And so they do assess, evaluate, and then choose those best materials based on those needs. And then they also look at just current trends. What are the things out there that kids are reading, so they can continue to attract kids into becoming that lifelong reader. They also wanna impact, you know, faculty and the community as a whole, and so they do a lot of support with organizations and clubs, hosting them a lot of times in that facility. Our libraries are really warm, welcoming facilities, and so they try to be like the hub of the school. So as far as program highlights, this may not seem like a big one on any other year, but on this particular year, with all of the redistribution of people and books, the libraries were open and in use by the first Friday of the school year, which was no small feat, particularly at some of our libraries, like South or the high-school that had quite a bit of unpacking to do. So they were pretty proud of that. We're very excited about our new library in the high-school. It's very aesthetically pleasing. All of you have probably been there. Very beautiful, and the fact that it is combined with the coffee shop and the Pro Start Kitchen really allows for some interdisciplinary kind of activities to occur. They do partner, again, with teachers to really promote literature and reading throughout different programs, and they really do look at not just our ELA, but partnering with our history and our science and our extracurriculars and things like that to get the best resources. And then they really do wanna focus on also helping our students become better researchers as they are going through that inquiry learning, and then making stations like Makerspaces where kids have time to do that creativity and access that part of their life. They also do really fun things like book clubs and literacy nights. They do things called book tastings, where you just, you know, take a little nip at what that book might be about, and hopefully it kinda sucks you in. And they do speed dating with books at Valentine's Day at the middle school. So again, just kind of getting that, you know, short thing, and maybe you'll find one that you fall in love with, a book that you fall in love with. So as far as goals from the previous program review, we had said that by the end of the 17-18 school year, the ratio of fiction books to student at the appropriate Lexile level would be 20 to 1. Our current ratio is 14 to 1, so it's still a goal that we're working towards. Likewise, as Goal 2, which was our having a nonfiction books per student at the appropriate Lexile level being 10 to 1, we're currently at 6 to 1. So you'll see later on our scorecard, those are goals that we're still working towards.
What do you think our biggest stumbling block is there?
Well, I will tell you that with all the redistribution this year, that set us back just a little bit. And so because things were redistributed, certain grade levels, you know, we had two intermediates that only had so many books, and so then other libraries, as we shifted everything, had to think about, what do I wanna buy? What do I need to buy? So there's been just a little bit of that, but it's also really given our libraries a really good opportunity to look at everything that's in their library and take an honest look at what really still needs to be here and what are the needs. Librarians hate to get rid of books. It's, you know, I think a personal violation for them, but sometimes you need to. And so I think it's been, in the end, a really good process, and they think so, too. So they're gonna continue to build up their resources. They still feel those are very achievable goals within the next two years.
Some heavier weeding with the, in preparation for the move lowered that number, I think.
And then Goal 3, we did attain, which was by the end of the 17-18 school year, the average age of the nonfiction collection will be 14 years old. We are at 13 years old. That is where the weeding did really play into in a positive way, because it did make us take a look at what we really needed, and that helped lower that age of the average book. Dr. Hoffman's gonna go over our scorecard and our future goals. Good evening. So our scorecard has six components on it. The first two were mentioned in our previous score areas, the ratio of fiction books per student at the appropriate Lexile, as well as the ratio of nonfiction books per student at the appropriate Lexile. As mentioned, current ratio is 14 to 1 for our fiction books and 6 to 1 that we'll maintain as a goal, as you'll see on the next slide. The average age of fiction collection, again, was 13 years old. That goal was a previous one, and it was attained. We actually have surpassed what we feel like is the ideal. And then the average age of nonfiction collection is also at 13 years, and that, again, is surpassing our goal of 14. Student survey, we picked one of the questions that we felt like we wanted to really dive deeply into and kind of continue to work on, and that is helping students be able to answer that they know how to find and to read an ebook. We know the value and the beauty of print resources, but we also know in this age that we're in, it's important that students be able to access and feel like they can interact successfully with the electronic and digital resources that are available to them, not only in our school libraries but beyond. And so we have 76% of our students who answered that, yes, they can do those things, and our goal would be that 85% of our students feel confident in reporting as such. And then, again, from that student perception survey, that the library's available whenever they need it. 88% of our students felt that it was, and that meets our goal of at 85% that we had set on the scorecard. So spoken to earlier by Dr. Barr, two of our previous goals remain from our committee that we would really like to continue to dive even more forward into trying to meet, and we do feel like that these are very attainable. So the first one, by the end of the 19-20 school year, which sounds very odd to say, 19-20, the ratio of fiction books per student at the appropriate Lexile will be that 20 to 1 that we had intended. And then the second goal relates to the nonfiction book ratio at the appropriate Lexile, and it would be 10 to 1, again, which is our current goal. Opportunities for improvement, there are always those. Here are some of the exciting ones that our librarians would really like to emphasize, and so continuing to partner with teachers to provide even more of that rich and inquiry-based environment, much like the Makerspaces that Dr. Barr mentioned earlier, and just really taking those opportunities and continuing to make them relevant and accessible to our students, so that library really expands beyond just going in there for reading, but so many other purposes as well. That research process plays into that as well. Continuing to meet vertically, so not just with elementary counterparts and elementary counterparts, but really taking that K-12 perspective, so that they can regularly explore new concepts, new ideas, new trends, learn from one another, know what's out there, and how that build to support our students from level to level can really continue to be strong. And then engage our community in accessing our facilities, continuing to do that, in particular at the high-school. As Dr. Barr mentioned, the library is beautiful. We also have that Pro Start Kitchen right next to it, and it does allow for so many opportunities for our students, but then also for our community, and just continuing to open up those doors and find ways to bring our community in to that environment. Any questions?
Is our libraries open after school at the high-school specifically, and then possibly even at the middle-school level?
Are they open after school?
Yes.
For a limited amount of time, not extended into the evening.
Okay, 'cause I know when I read one of our scholarship applications for the Belter Scholarship, that was one of the points that one of our students brought up, was they would like to have more availability after school to continue work, since we're doing so many projects now, to be able to have access to the library after school, so that they can continue to work before they leave here. Because their comment was, once they leave here, sometimes it's hard to get restarted back on working, or when they're working with a group, especially since we have the rooms specifically built now for groups to work in them. So I guess making sure our students know if that is available to them after school.
Yeah, limited amount of time, so probably not as long as they were looking for, so good point.
What is the access to the community as far as, can just anybody from the community come into the library?
I believe you can work through the high-school if you wanted to, for lack of a better word, rent this, reserve the room. Reserve, that's the word I'm looking for. I'm sorry, not rent, reserve the space, then that is something that is a possibility.
Could you tell us a little more about the ebooks that are available to the students? I mean, just like quantity or types, or just something general?
I can definitely research and get you some more information about that.
Sorry, I didn't ask it advanced.
No, that's all right. Our librarians keep meticulous records, as you're probably not surprised, and so we definitely can get that information and give you a little bit more.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
And sorry for the disruption. Can we get a picture? So we have one of our Pro Start students that has brought us some cookies. So if you'd come up, and we'll get a picture with you and your cookies and the board. So if the whole board would... And I'll just keep them here. Okay. So I'll start with the new board members first. We'll go down that way. So we are now on Board Policies. Dr. Monses.
So we have a group of policies here, and just to kinda refresh everybody's memory, we mentioned last month that we are in the process of transitioning Policy Service, so you see kind of a mixed group here. First is a policy GCPB that is a current MSBA policy that we want to go ahead and modify now prior to June 1st. The other policies on the list are from the new Policy Service, and they're numbered. You'll notice they're numbered instead of lettered, and those numbers mean something. The first digit tells you what grouping or what type of policy it is. So for example, if it starts with a 2, it's related to students. You know, if it starts with a 4, it's staff. If it's 3, it's finance, you know, things of that sort. So in some ways, I think it might be easier to follow moving forward. What we've done, then, is worked with our new Policy Service, based on your approval of making that transition a few months ago, to start looking at some of the more customized policies that we have now, ones that we edited to kinda make our own versus just using the standard language. And so this group of about 20 that are numbered are the first round that the Policy Committee has looked at, and basically it's an effort to transfer the, what we think's the important information from our old policy language to the new policy language. The first one, though, that is still the GCPB, has to do with teachers who are going to leave the district and notify us after June 1st. And right now, our liquidated damages is a really low amount and way behind what neighboring districts is, are, excuse me, and based on Dr. Hatfield's research and information, we'd like to increase that. So we're showing it as an update to the current policy. You'll also see next month that we're up using that same language and carrying it forward to the new policy. These are first readings. There's no action tonight. We have more time to review. If you have any questions, we can try to answer them now and/or between now and the next board meeting, because they'll show up as an action item next month for your final approval. And the numbered policies will have either a July 1st or an August 1st effective date when we get to that point, because we'll have many more to bring through the process, if you will, this summer.
And just a quick question. So in terms of the timing of getting through all of them, since we are switching, what is the goal, to get through them all in one year or back on the five-year cycle, or what's the schedule?
So the customized ones, which there's about 40 of those, we're gonna bring through the traditional policy review process. So there are 20, about 20 in this group, and another 20 for next month. The rest of their Policy Service is what we call their standard or generic language. We'll go ahead and approve them as a group, and then the review committee can start looking in them in more detail, kinda like we did with the five-year cycle we've been having.
So it's really just 40 that are...
Roughly, yeah. We went through our existing policies and identified the ones that, over the last five years, we know we have made tweaks to or adjustments to and tried to make sure we capture that into the new Policy Service. So it's gonna be a little bit messy as a process, because there's gonna be a big volume to take care of this summer, and then the committee can continue to look, then, at the details as we move forward and start making revisions as soon as we want to, so.
Yeah, the transition might be a little messy, but I think the end product's gonna be really helpful. What we're transitioning to is an easier format to follow, and the language is clearer.
Clearer and cleaner language, I think.
Yep, I would agree. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. We are moving on to action items. We are now on K-5 Math Resource Adoption. Dr. Michelle Hoffman.
Hello again. I'm excited to be before you tonight to talk about elementary math resources. We, as you know, a comprehensive resource review is the final step in our district's curriculum process itself. The math curriculum was reviewed by our curriculum team, our math curriculum members of that team, during the 15-16 school year, so it's been a little while. That was a very exciting and exhaustive process, and really brought to fruition just where our curriculum was and those next steps that we've been engaging in since. Then the resource review team comprised of K-12 members met two years ago, began meeting two years ago, and you may recall that a secondary recommendation for math resource was brought before the board last spring and subsequently approved. And then it was determined we were going to delay the elementary portion and continue throughout this year, and then at this time, of course, tonight, we're bringing before you a recommendation. Many of the same members that served on the curriculum review team carried forward into the resource review team, and so at the end of this two-year process for the elementary resource review, it has led to some really great discussion, and we really do feel like we've got a viable resource we're gonna talk about here a little while to recommend. So our review process itself included several steps and extensive feedback loops with our teachers themselves. Their voice is so important. They're the ones working every day with our students in the classroom, and so we really need to know what's working, what's not, and what are the needs, so that we can best help our students learn and achieve the way in which we work so hard to attain. So the first step was reviewing what our current resources were, how they were working. That partially was begun with the curriculum review process itself, and then feedback from the vertical team members as they examine curriculum, but also our resources, was a part of that first step. Determining where and how well our current resources aligned with our local standards, as well as our state. We know that we have increased the rigor of our standards here in the last few years, and we know that our students can achieve those, and we wanted to make sure that the resources in our classrooms really do match that level that our teachers are striving for with our students. Then specifically gathering through a needs assessment process, feedback from our teachers about where are the greatest needs? What are those priorities that we're looking for as we move forward to examine what possible resource might be best to meet our local needs? And then reviewing selected resource options and seeking further input from our staff, and then ranking and selecting to finally bring a recommendation before you tonight. So it was a two-year-long process. The math priorities for elementary particularly that were identified from our teachers included early numeracy, they really wanted a resource that was going to emphasize that. Number and operations and fractions was determined as a need as well. The level of rigor in general to reflect our current standards and expectations of our students, and then just the ability to not only teach those basic foundational skills, but to have those application opportunities for our students that are so important in this day and age. So, we followed a, we use a resource rubric that our teachers on the team developed, and it was based on our local priorities and needs that allowed our team to really focus on some key elements that we felt like were critical for the resource we were seeking. So, making sure that the instructional practices within it were research-based, there was a strong content focus, it was aligned both as the grades progressed from K through 5 and on up, but also within the grade that it progressed in a way that made sense to students throughout a year. It was balanced and rigorous at the same time, it was aligned to our local and state priorities, differentiated for students, so students who needed to be pushed a little further, that was present in the resource, and as well as the students who needed more time or a different way, so that the students on both ends of that spectrum could be met, the needs of them could be met. Making sure that there were strong parent and home resources and technology integration opportunities, sound professional development to support the implementation of the resource, we know how important it is, and then that the resource was sustainable. So, beyond just the first couple of years of adopting anything, we wanted to make sure that the resource was going to endure as best as possible. So, there were several products initially reviewed, and the team determined to bring back three to the table. Those included Bridges, Eureka Math, and Ready. We looked specifically, as the elementary team, of course, at K-5 and how well those resources addressed the rubric concepts listed above, and you'll see the scores listed here in the third column. What's notable is that all three resources that we brought to the table for that deep review scored very highly, and in fact, they were all within less than a point of each other, which is pretty unusual, but definitely reaffirmed for the team, we brought some really solid resource options to the table. You'll note, it's mentioned that one of the products that we reviewed was Ready, and after December, it is no longer sold in the form in which we reviewed it. There's actually a whole second half of it that's an assessment program, and you may also recall from the past as a board that during our benchmark assessment review process, it was one of the products that had been reviewed. It was not brought forth for a recommendation to adopt, and NWA was determined to better meet our needs. So, the team did determine that we were not going to continue forward with exploring Ready at that point, so. So, at the end of the rubric review process, lots of more discussion, further input and conversation, the committee really did believe that two resources were viable and they were bringing forth tonight, one for consideration, and that is Eureka Math. We are also recommending that an online companion practice component that's actually built from the Eureka Math program itself called ZERN be included as well. It aligns with those lessons, but it also provides that online individualized practice component for students at whatever their individual level is. So, the extension opportunities are there, provides feedback in real time to students, and it's a nice companion piece for our teachers, again, for that independent practice. I might mention that Eureka Math is what is one of what is called an open educational resource, which are high-quality teaching and learning and assessment materials available today to educators and really anyone in the public, either relatively low or sometimes no cost. And so, one advantage to that approach is they are basically living resources, so any time that an update is made, instead of at some point having determined whether or not to buy a whole new edition per se, whatever the updates or augmentations or corrections or just enhancements, that is communicated from the publisher, and then we're able to just simply go in, select whatever activity or page that has affected and reprint and provide those to our teachers. It's also nice, because as an open ed resource, parents have complete access to the whole resource itself, so if they want to take a deep dive into whatever component, they have access online to that in its full form. We know that selecting the right resource is critical, but so is supporting our teachers with really good professional development to make it understood and really effective with the students that they're working with. And so, our elementary resource review team really did a great job discussing and coming up with a two-year implementation plan, as well as a plan for professional development within those first couple of years. So, in the first year, next year, 18-19, kindergarten and first grade teachers would begin full implementation. That would kick off on May 29th and 30th with two full days of intensive professional development. That way, teachers get a real great start with understanding the resource, it'll be in their hands as they leave, they can choose to not look at it again until our back-to-school days, or for those who just want to spend their summer by the pool diving in, they absolutely can do so, and they'll have that support from the professional development at the end of the school year to do it. And then a representative from each of our other grades, second, third, fourth, and fifth, will also attend that two-day intensive training, and then they, along with a kindergarten and first grade representative, will continue to meet with our curriculum specialists and myself to really dive in and plan what is our ongoing approach to professional development. So, it's not just this initial great one-shot at the beginning, and then that's it, but we want to make sure we provide that ongoing support throughout the first couple of years of this implementation especially. And then in that second year, those second through fifth grade representatives that I had mentioned will be heavily involved in not only designing, but helping us facilitate that professional development support in year two when our second through fifth grade teachers begin implementation. You'll see, kind of towards the end here, that we have an overview of what year one costs are estimated to be. They include and cover professional development, which is heavy in that first year, materials, stipends, and such for teachers who are involved in that planning and professional development planning process, and then ZERN itself. So, again, our elementary team is recommending Eureka Math as an elementary math, as the elementary math resource for the board's approval, at an estimated cost of $53,474 and change for year one, and that does include professional development as well. And then, the five-year estimate that our costs would entail would be $136,784. Do you have any questions?
So, they're only giving us one year of professional development for them coming in?
We have explored a variety of options, they have, of course, many, but with that intensive professional development and the way we've worked with them to design kind of that teacher leadership, we actually are going to try to access a train-the-trainer model. So, we'll bring those folks in, we'll have representatives from every grade level, our curriculum specialists as well, and then we can always, if the need develops, seek out, you know, what additional professional development from the company itself would look like. But we really do feel like we'll have access to training PowerPoints, all the materials, have folks who sat there firsthand and be able to support our teachers in those first couple of years really well. And again, engaging our teachers themselves in what is the need, how do we plan that relevant support, and what does that look like?
They'll come as much as we want.
Oh, yes. If we pay.
Well, I know sometimes in the contracts, they will, you know, we can ask or require so much professional development.
Yes. They were pretty great. They talked to us about what they'd recommended, what's worked otherwise, but also what our current setup would really, would work best for us.
I just wanted to say, I really like the idea of the parents having full access to it. You know, I know we're always looking for ways to engage our parents, and so that's a great benefit, I think.
I think the flexibility of open resource is important as well. I think this is the first curriculum we've really kind of gone down that path with in detail, and I would expect that to be the trend moving forward. Buying a book and holding on to it and using it for 10 to 15 years is not as prevalent moving forward.
Right. And we still have access to all the print that we want, but it's just able to be accessed online and updated on an ongoing, real-time basis, so.
Is there anything you don't like about it?
That maybe we don't have it yet? No, I, I'm not. I really, I mean, with anything, nothing is perfect, and we'll learn some things as we go, but the nice part is we can adapt it with our teachers' input to meet our needs. We really do feel like it's a strong resource and feel very confident in the recommendation. The committee spent two years and just feels like this is a sound recommendation.
Is this a complete paradigm shift in terms of how we're teaching math from the last curriculum, or would you say it's kind of a continuation of what we're already doing, just a better resource?
I think it's an evolution. I think we've already been going there, we just haven't had the resource itself to support it. We've got teachers who are already actually accessing some of the free components of it, and so really, this will just provide them a solid, in their hands or at least accessible online version of what it is that we know our standards need and our teachers are striving to teach, but this resource will then make sure it's a good match for that.
So, our teachers aren't going to be having to learn a completely different way of teaching math, this is just kind of a next step for them?
I would agree. We have had ongoing professional development that's very aligned to what this resource is going to illustrate, yes.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Any other questions?
I use a lot of open-source software, and I know using open source, you sacrifice the level of support you get. What, I mean, what level of support are we guaranteed using an open source?
As far as access to the materials themselves, or?
Any support that we need, you know, from the company that we buy it from, or, you know, what are they guaranteeing us as, you know, through support?
What I would say is that what we have received from them and our discussions mirror really those of a traditional textbook company, any of those in fact that we had reviewed as part of this process. So, we have access to representatives on an ongoing basis. We have a professional development trainer that will remain accessible beyond that training. Now, if we bring them in, of course, that's an additional cost, as it would be with any traditional company. We have the advantage of, we actually get updated resources, where we don't get that with the traditional adoption of a more bound and, anyway, traditional concept or product. There's online support you can communicate with, and that's true for other resources that are more of that traditional format as well. So, I don't know that we've noticed a distinct loss of any kind with regards to what we have access to.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the adoption of Eureka Math as the district's K-5 elementary math resource.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional comments, questions? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And if we could pass the cookies to our administrator, so they can have some as well, that would be great. We are now on Seal of Bilinguality. Application, Dr. Crystal Barr.
Good evening again. So, now I'm here to speak to you about the Seal of Bilinguality. This is an award that can be given by a school, a district, or a state level to students who have studied and really shown proficiency in more than one language before they graduate from high school. As far as the popularity of offering the Seal of Bilinguality, this map I had appeared just to show you, anything that's in dark blue are states that have already gone through this process and opened this up to their districts. So, Missouri is now blue, and you can see that there are a few states that are considering it, like Iowa, and then there are some that are still in the early stages, but it's obviously something that's fairly popular in our country at this point. So, why would we implement a Seal of Bilinguality program? It does encourage students to pursue bilinguality, it does honor those kids who are already on that path and can prove that proficiency, and then evidence of these skills are really going to become more and more attractive, not just at the college level, but also to our future employers as they continue to see that growing need. Missouri Seal of Bilinguality is awarded to students who have demonstrated a specific level of proficiency in English, and they choose to use the EOC as that demonstration, and also demonstrate proficiency in at least one other language. Districts do have some leeway in what assessments they want to give for the other language proficiency, and in a couple slides, we'll see what our teachers had chosen as their assessment of choice. And it also does, again, support that bilingualism and that student's aptitude to succeed. There is something in Missouri Seal of Bilinguality that is different from other states, and there is some flexibility that states have when they choose to move forward on this. So, Missouri Seal of Bilinguality program does require that students demonstrate proficiency on a social-cultural competence project, and these projects are approved and assessed by our actual modern language teachers here in our district with a locally-developed rubric. So, a natural question would be, what is a socio-cultural project? So, there are some examples that our teachers have come up with as ones that would meet their standards. They could have a student doing an essay or a presentation about how proficiency in both languages is really beneficial to the community. They could do that at a STEAM night, a pre-enrollment night, middle school enrollment night, somewhere where they're out expressing that to our parents in our community. They could complete a community service project where they had to use both languages, teach a lesson to some of our younger students in both languages, tutor an actual bilingual student, one of our English language students, or partner with a community or business organization to provide a needed service, like translating documents, in-person translation, or creating some kind of bilingual artifacts or resources. So, the state of Missouri does have some things that they absolutely require you have to do, such as a student being proficient on the EOC, but then they also give districts a choice of kind of how they want to set some standards on the Seal of Bilinguality and a distinguished Seal of Bilinguality. So, our teachers at the high school actually agreed upon these standards for these two levels of SEAL, that a regular Seal of Bilinguality student would have a 3.0 GPA, be proficient in the English EOC, which the state requires, score a 4 or a 5 on the IB Language B Assessment. So, the state has several assessments you can choose from, this is one we already give, and so it was a natural fit. And then the completion of all their English credits for graduation, that seemed a natural fit. For a distinguished Seal of Bilinguality, it is very similar, but an increased level of rigor, so a 3.5 GPA, proficient or advanced on the English EOC, a score of a 6 or a 7 on the IB Language B Assessment, and then again, completion of all the English requirements for graduation.
And IB, you're meaning international?
International, baccalaureate, yes.
So, if you're not in that program, can you still take that test?
You can, and we can also still offer, if we wanted to, a student could take an AP test. So, for instance, let's-
So, they wouldn't have to be in IB to get this certification?
Not necessarily, no. Also, the state will say that, let's say we have a student who just happens to be bilingual and Russian, we can order an AP test and that, and if they have proficiency in that, then they can, so it's not just limited to French and Spanish. So, some additional benefits is that you can actually, our students can actually earn credit hours toward their four-year degree, which is wonderful. And so, I have listed up there four universities, Missouri State, Missouri Southern, UCM, and Evangel University, who are all offering 12 hours, and then this list gets continually updated. So, as of today, another college would be up there, Truman State has agreed to offer six to 14 hours, depending on how the student does on that language assessment. So, that continues to grow, it seems like every time I check it, there's another university on there. DESI also is developing some business support for the SEAL as well, so just letters of support from businesses saying that they would definitely take this into consideration when they were employing a person if they had this kind of SEAL, and those are some of the industries that have signed on, and again, that list too just continues to grow.
I think this just continues in our path of trying to have our kids be able to get a job when they graduate high school.
It's a different, kind of like a certification, that again, I think will give them an edge up. So, our next steps are completing the initial application, which was also attached in your documentation, seeking approval for DESI to begin to implement the program in the 18-19 school year. We will develop ways to recognize students who attain the SEAL, and we have freedom as a district to do that. Do we honor them at awards night, do we put something on their transcript, but that is our freedom? Develop a rubric for the socio-cultural projects, notify students and parents of the opportunity so they're aware of what they can have their student be a part of, and then annually, we just have to notify DESI that we still would like to continue offering the Seal of Bilinguality. Questions?
Any questions or comments?
I think that's a neat benefit, that if we do have a student come in that's bilingual in a different language, we can, they can still access this program.
Yes, because we really do have a student who knows Russian, so that was an actual example.
All right.
What percentage of students do we have where English is not their primary language?
It's a pretty small percentage, just a couple percentages. So, our teacher who does it at the high school also splits her time with the middle school, so it's one teacher who goes through, and those are only our students who are from maybe a different country and are just not proficient in English. So, we have students who are bilingual, but who may be proficient in English, and so they don't need the English language program, but it's still a pretty small number.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the submission of the Seal of Bilinguality application.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Barr. We are now on summer school application. Dr. Al Volker.
Good evening. I reviewed, we went over as a board, and the summer school plan that was presented in February, so I'll be brief with this. This really is the formal document that you submit to the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so they can approve your summer program before you begin. So, just as a couple highlights, especially for our new board members, I'm sure they've probably seen them in all the communications and emails and phone calls that we've sent out, so thank you for your patience with that, but we would like everybody to enroll in our summer program. Some of our highlights, first year that we're providing transportation, K-12, so we're excited about that, as our high schools access, if they, morning and afternoon, they could do morning and afternoon transportation, we're excited about that. We also are greatly expanding our online course opportunities for our high school students, so we're excited about that as well. Many of the great aspects of the program, as I went over in February, and we greatly appreciate the board's support, we'll all that. So, this is the formal process, you'll see the three elementary schools, South Middle School is our site, and you'll see the high school listed three times- as well. Many of the great aspects of the program, as I went over in February, and we greatly appreciate the board's support, we'll all that. So this is the formal process. You'll see the three elementary schools. South Middle School is our site, and you'll see the high school listed three times. That's just three different components of the high school program. The enrichment, remediation, and the summer fitness component are all listed separately on there. They cover different times. Some are five-day-a-week, some are four-day-a-week, some extend in July, so that's why you have to list those components separately. But I'm really open for any questions about it. I know we've presented this before, so we don't want to belabor it, but I just need to ask for your approval of our summer school applications, so we could submit that to DESI.
Any questions or comments?
I like that we have more virtual classes for high schools.
Yep. Our teachers are working really hard on that. I've been really impressed with our high school staff and with Carmen Ricker and Jason Waltz, who've been working very closely with our high school teachers on developing those online classes. I've been very, it's really neat to see and watch them work.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the 2018 summer school application.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Volker.
All right, thank you very much.
We are now on the 2018-19 additional staffing request. Dr. Hatfield.
Good evening. All right. This evening, I'm coming before you to ask for your approval for some additional staff positions. In March, on the 8th, actually, during our budget work session, we laid out for you some additional positions we were considering, and we tiered those based upon priority. And then the March regular meeting, you guys approved 4.3 additional FTE. Well, since the March meeting, we've had obviously some additional time to consider and evaluate programs. We've also gotten some updated enrollment projections, particularly at the kindergarten grade level. And obviously, with the passage of Prop RP, we feel like that we are in a position and need to ask you for some additional positions. So again, we've talked about these before, but I will briefly go through them. We are requesting three additional FTE certified staff specifically for kindergarten at Timber Creek, Eagle Glen, and Bridle Ridge. We are requesting a middle school core math teacher that would be shared between the two middle schools. Core math is an intervention course that students take in addition to their regular math class. It's taken as an elective for those who need additional assistance. We are also requesting the addition of a 1.0 FTE to our compass program in the form of a special education teacher. We have also requested a licensed mental health professional. That's an additional one FTE. So that would be in addition to the program we already have. We have one current social worker. We're replacing her through her retirement, and then this is adding a position that we don't currently have. We are also requesting the addition of some extra-duty stipends, HOSA, which is the Future Health Professionals, I think it's HOSA. That group is like a TSA group. It's our Project Lead the Way, and we believe, just like our culinary and TSA, we need a stipend for the individual that is working with that program. Special Olympics, as you saw earlier, continues to grow, and we feel the need to add a coach so that we can properly supervise kids and make sure they're having a great experience. And then also, we are requesting an overload teaching period for Project Lead the Way. What that means is we need to offer an extra block or an extra section of a Project Lead the Way course at the high school. And so what we're going to do is, one semester, the teacher who teaches that, instead of having a planned period, will teach on that planned period. So we are compensating for that additional time that he won't have a planned period. We are also requesting a part-time database administrator. We continue to use our computers for assessment and reporting the state requirements. And right now, we have one individual who is doing all of that work in the district, and we believe adding a part-time fourth FTE will be helpful. Additionally, a campus supervisor is being requested for South Middle School. This is to provide some equity. East Middle School has a campus supervisor. When we did the reconfiguration, this was one of the positions based upon enrollment. We thought that maybe we could do without. And during this school year, South Middle School has definitely missed having that position, and we believe adding it back is appropriate. We are also requesting a additional custodian to provide support at South Middle School and the high school. Obviously, the high school has had quite a significant addition, and we did add some custodians last year, but we see the need to add additional. And with the growth in enrollment at South Middle School, they are going to begin using more space than they are this year, so we'll need that custodial support there as well. And finally, we're requesting that we can increase the parent educator pay. Parent educators are paid on a per-visit basis, so when they go to a home, they receive a set fee or a set amount for doing that. That has not been increased in 20 years, and we thought it was time to do so. So-
That's the parents as teachers.
Parents as teachers, yes. So in total, we're requesting 8.25 FTE. That has an estimated cost of $429,000, which doesn't include any associated supplies. I would be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Where are we going to put the mental health professional?
It will not be assigned to one building in particular. It will be a district-wide support. So I don't know that we've identified where we house them or what we call their home building, but it will not be exclusively for one school.
And the other one will stay at the high school like they have now?
We will utilize it more broadly as well.
What is the job description of your campus supervisor?
Sure. So the campus supervisor is a support to the building in many ways. They do daily bus supervision. They walk the halls, monitor during the day. They monitor the cameras. They check doors. When a student is needed or needs to be escorted from a classroom, this campus supervisor does that. Triesages with students, works with them through their plans to help them be successful, does lunch duty. The one we have at East Middle School even cleans and does some laundry for kids. A little bit different. Our SRO, it's definitely a different position than our SRO.
Do you have any applicants in mind for these?
I don't. I haven't posted them yet because I didn't have your approval. So, no, no, I don't. I would hope we would find someone as excellent as the individual we have at East Middle School right now. If you know someone that's interested, have them see me.
And no, you can't do it. So I know that one of the concerns that some people had in terms of voting for the levy is they didn't want us to just add a bunch of positions and not be able to raise the salaries for our teachers.
That's next on the agenda.
Okay. So this, I just want to, I know the answer to this, but does this affect our ability to raise salaries for our teachers?
No.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
The other comment related to that is, just like improving salaries as part of our strategic plan, each of these positions is aligned to one of the strategies in our plan. So that's kind of the filter we use before we think about bringing you these additional positions. The enrollment increase ones are just easy because the kids are coming. We already have enough kindergartners in our count, based on the March roundup, that the class, we know the class is going to be larger than last year's kindergarten class. We're already at our August number from last year, now here in April. So that typically grows 15% to 20% over the course of the summer by the time we start school. So-
I was a little bit surprised by that. It grew a little bit quicker than I thought it was.
And then likewise with that, that brings in additional funding through attendance as well. So that more than, you know, certainly helps pay for those extra positions. The rest of them are more funded through our increase in Prop RP or other revenue growth over time. So.
Yes, like the additional mental health professional is tied directly to what we communicated to the community.
Absolutely.
Well, and I think it's a good indication, if we're bringing in younger families with kindergartners to our schools, to our district, it's a good, what's the word I'm looking for?
It's a healthy indicator.
Yes, there you go. That we have a good school district, and young families are wanting to raise their kids in a stable school district, so.
And I was going to tell you, thank you for pointing out which strategy each of those things relate to. So the public can see that we're tying it back to our strategic plan.
You're welcome. I got some advice from a very wise man to do that.
I don't know which one. All right. Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the additional staffing request for 2018-19 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we are now on salary schedules and benefits.
I assume you were talking about me, Lisa. I appreciate that. Team RAPEC meets monthly throughout the year, and it's comprised of some outstanding staff members across all classifications of employees. We're always impressed at how each member is able to focus on what's best for the whole and not necessarily on what best may serve their own needs. So and obviously, this group knows a major component of the operations budget is salary and benefits. Team RAPEC worked throughout the year to create a recommendation that would provide enhancements to our current staff and support the recruitment of future staff members. I'm going to give you a quick, high-level overview of the recommendations from Team RAPEC, and then Dr. Hatfield will provide the detail in each area. We obviously want to provide the step for all staff on the salary schedule if they, if a step is available to them. We want to continue our board-paid health insurance plan for all eligible employees. That includes a 2% rate increase for our qualified high-deductible health insurance plan as the base. Provide a board-paid dental insurance plan for eligibles, inclusive of an actual 3% rate decrease because of the bid year work done by Dr. Hatfield. Maintain level of board-paid life health insurance, excuse me, life insurance and employee assistance program. Increase certified salary schedule by $1,500 with equivalent percentage increases to support staff, administrative, professional, support, and extra-duty schedules. Increase support staff schedule by an additional 1% beyond steps and percentage increase as described above. Add a step to the certified salary schedules at master's degree and beyond, columns E to M, and a corresponding step to administrative and support professional schedule. Also want to include a master's plus 45 with the specialist column on the certified salary schedule. That total additional cost of that compensation plan being recommended is $2,403,500. These recommendations represent our continued effort to hire and retain high-quality staff, as outlined in our strategic plan and as promised in the levy campaign.
Just as we're transitioning here, I might comment a little bit about the $1,500 to the base to give you a little context. In the last, I think, seven years collectively, we've added $1,100 to the base. So to do $1,500 in one year, that is what we really had promised through the process. So Dr. Hatfield will give you a little more of the detail then.
I'm going to start with talking about our insurance and our benefits. This was a bid year for our board-paid benefits. So in December, CBIZ went out to work for us and to look for bids. And then they came back in February, and we met with a subcommittee of Team RAPEC to begin going through the plethora of information that the company's provided. That subcommittee then narrowed down all of that information, and what you see on the screen is what we reported or showed to Team RAPEC, so that they could begin giving us some input to make some decisions. So our employee assistance program was one of our bid plans this year. Our employee assistance program, just so that you know, is available to all staff. Our benefits eligible employees are our full-time staff. So they're the ones that get their medical, dental, and a small life insurance policy paid for. But the employee assistance program is available to anyone who can say that RAPEC is their employer. So that's an amazing benefit that we've had for a few years now, and so very thankful for that. So there were nine carrier responses, and the small subcommittee of Team RAPEC recommended that New Directions, which is our current provider, be continued. So that was presented to Team RAPEC. In the life insurance category, we received 12 responses and recommended Standard, which is our current provider, be the one that we continued with, and it was actually a rate decrease as well. In the dental category, we received 13 bids. Had no idea there were that many dental insurance carriers out there. And the smaller committee took Delta, Cigna through the CSD organization, Humana, MetLife, and Standard back to the big Team RAPEC for consideration. And then for medical, we actually received five bids. I've stood up here before and said we didn't receive any. So it's very nice that we are, our loss in our performance is beginning to get us some attention again. But Blue Cross Blue Shield, which is our current provider, and see the CSD group, which is a consortium that offers through Cigna, those were the two that we took back to the entire team for consideration. So what we ended up deciding, and it's actually on the next page of the memo, and I'll walk through this a little bit here. I mentioned the EAP with New Directions. We wanted to stay consistent there. Life insurance was Standard. The dental, we did have discussions mostly between Cigna and Delta. Cigna actually was a, they gave us even a greater rate decrease, but the one thing that really stopped us from going there is that many of our top dentists that our staff use were not in the Cigna network. And I believe it was actually the top four specifically, and then several others throughout the list. So because Cigna also came back with a decrease, I believe, sorry, Delta came back with a decrease, we didn't feel that the amount of difference was significant enough for our staff to lose some of the dentists that they were comfortable with and have been using for years. And then medical, we strongly considered the CSD pooled insurance. There were just some things that we felt wouldn't be good for RAPEC through that. Changing to Cigna was one concern, but the pool has some requirements. You have to stay in the program for five years. We would have had to pay our terminal fee out to Blue Cross Blue Shield to pay our run-out claims, and then we would have had to re-establish that pool for our new one. So by staying with Blue Cross Blue Shield, none of those things had to happen. So we were pleased to be able to recommend Blue Cross Blue Shield. The next point of consideration then was, what was that rate increase going to be? And we looked at three options. The initial response from Blue Cross Blue Shield was a 4% rate increase, and that was across all plans. We have two base plans that are high deductible, and we have two buy-up plans, our HMO and our PPO. So it was a 4% across the board, which would have been $231,300 cost to the district to do the renewal in that manner. The second option we considered was a 2% increase to the district-paid plans and a 5.6% increase to the buy-up plans. So the plans that people were selecting that the district doesn't pay for took a heavier load of that renewal. And then the third option was for our base plans to take a 0% increase, and the buy-up plans to take 7.2% increase. Ultimately, the committee decided that they didn't want to put all the cost on the buy-up plans, but they also wanted to put as much money into the salary pool as possible. So they are recommending that we go with the 2% increase to our base plans and the 5.6% increase to the buy-up plans. That is a cost to the district of $115,700.
What is the cost to the individual on that? So let's say the 2%, is that $100 a month? Is that $100 every six months?
On the 2%, that's board-paid, so the employee pays nothing.
Unless they insure family members.
Yes.
And then the 5% is kind of what range?
I can get the exact numbers to you. I don't have them with me. I think about $20 to $30 a month, depending on the plan.
Thank you.
So as you can see, what we're recommending, that the board approved this year, would have a total budgetary impact of $105,542. As far as our voluntary benefits go, we do offer several to our staff, but again, these are benefits that they pay for themselves. No major changes. We had a bid year last year for this. The only thing that will be changing is Humana no longer offers an accident policy, so we're moving to Guardian as the provider. And then Guardian had a hospital indemnity program that we thought looked very interesting, and some of our employees might want to use, so we are going to offer that as well this year. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Might add, one of the, part of the rationale of shifting some of the additional costs to the buy-up plans is they tend to have higher usage as well. So that was part of the rationale as well. If they're carrying more of the cost, so to speak, to the overall plan, carrying a little more of the burden would make sense as well. So that was part of the rationale.
And overall, all of our plans are doing well, but the PPO and the HMO are not doing as well as the high deductible. So that's exactly correct. It seemed to make sense to do it that way.
Any questions or comments? This is not coming from me personally, because I don't take insurance. I think that Blue Cross Blue Shield is a great choice, and I will be voting yes on this. I would like you to encourage Blue Cross Blue Shield to do a better job in their mental health coverage, because a lot of mental health professionals are dropping them as a carrier because of their poor, how they manage that. They either don't pay or aren't paying very much. So there's a lot of mental health professionals that are no longer accepting Blue Cross Blue Shield. So as an institution, if we could encourage them, that mental health is very important, the mental health options for our staff is very important, and if you could communicate that strongly to them.
Most definitely. I'll make sure CBIZ is very aware of that as well.
I'm sorry?
I will make sure CBIZ, who we work with, that's something that they need to be aware of as well, if they're not already.
Yes. So I don't take insurance as a professional, so this is not a professional thing. I just am running into that issue when I'm sending people off for medication. There's a lot of people starting to drop it, so.
I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Any other questions?
She's also going to talk a little bit about the salary schedules.
Yeah, I'm not quite done. Sorry.
Go right ahead.
I just thought we'd get rid of insurance before we moved on to salary. So the next item that we have in this- So the next item that we have in this, there was a lot of attachments here, I know, is a memo regarding the changes that we're proposing for the salary schedule, and you did have all of the salary schedules to view as well. So just to give a high-level view of some of the changes that we're proposing, on the certified salary schedule, and that would be any staff that is certified, teachers, counselors, library media specialists, and a few more, we are recommending that we add $1,500 to the base salary, which would bring our starting salary to $36,700. We are requesting that we add an additional step to the columns for masters and beyond. Right now, our masters column stops at year 20, and we have a lot of staff who are frozen because they, they got their master's degree, but they didn't go any further in their education. So this has been something we've discussed for several years, adding a step. We think it's appropriate to do so with these columns because it, those individuals have gone and gotten additional graduate hours, and we think it's important to acknowledge their years of service. Also, we are changing, or proposing to change, that our specialist column now says specialist or masters plus 45. That was, that came directly out of the strategic planning meetings and has been a question that staff have asked. There are many specialist programs out there, but some of them don't always lend themselves to what our teachers want to improve on. So by changing this to masters plus 45, someone can continue their graduate coursework in areas that would be more relevant to their teaching or what they are trying to improve in. Overall, with the, with the step that we are recommending each employee receive, it is a 5.3 average percent increase to the certified staff. The support schedule, we are recommending approximately a 4% increase to the base hourly rate for each salary grade with steps. Overall, that is a total of a 6% increase. The administrative and support professional schedule, we did adjust the indexes on these salary grades to align with the overall salary increase percentages. The administrative and support professional schedule is indexed from the teacher's schedule, and we wanted to ensure that there was an equal increase among all staff. So we did make adjustments to those indexes. We did add an additional step to all grades. Currently, it just goes to step 20, and we want to add step 21 all the way across. And then, so overall, that is a 5.3% average increase, including step movement. And then finally, our extra-duty schedule, something we put in place probably three years ago now, maybe four, is indexed directly off our teacher's salary schedule. If you were around a few years ago, you'll recall we had stipends for coaches and activity sponsors that hadn't increased in, I think it might have been 15-ish years. So when we did the EMS study, we put in the extra-duty schedule that's indexed to the teacher or certified schedule so that every year if a coach or an activity sponsor remains in a position, they actually do get a slight increase in that stipend. And I think that has been very well received by our staff. So again, you had all the schedules in front of you. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
I'm glad to see the, the column J because I was in that strategic plan, and we did have a lot of teachers comment on continuing in maybe their specific area that they teach in getting more certification and being rewarded for that.
It's a pretty significant jump to move over to that column, so having that opportunity without have to pursue a specialist degree in administration or something of that sort is, is helpful.
Well, just makes sense to, if you teach history, do more history training.
One thing I might point out too is that you see a slightly higher average percentage for our support staff. The committee the last two or three years has taken that mindset, recognizing that many of our support groups are further behind the market, if you will, than even our certified staff. The other thing I'll comment, just in general terms about the process, is given the timeframe of, you know, the April election till now and getting this process done so that we can get everything accomplished contract-wise and benefits-wise for next year, we took kind of a all-inclusive approach to this. One of the things that's in our strategic plan and what our planning efforts need to include for next year is going back and identifying where are those individual employee groups or areas that we're falling behind, falling behind more than others. And so similar to what we did with the EMS study, I think we're going to tackle it ourselves this time to do our own little self-study with our, with our peer groups and, and try to identify if there's any places we need to target more resources. Once we have that research, we'll be able to inform both you and Team Ray Peck as we go through the process next year.
Well, that answered my question, because I was going to ask about nurses, because we.
It's already started, but that's exactly where that would be addressed, yes.
Any other questions or comments?
How does the 36.7 base salary compare with other districts?
Well, I don't know what other districts are doing this year, so we'll have to wait and see, but it will, we were in the kind of the bottom third. I believe it raises us up into the middle area, which is exciting. Been in the bottom third for a while.
And obviously, there are a lot of variables that are going to play into this, but my hope is that we can do something similar to this again next year in terms of the total salary package. It's too early to assert that at this point, but once we get more information under our belt, my hope is that we can be aggressive again next year with an addition.
In my conversations with my colleagues, I don't feel that anyone is doing anything nearly this significant, with the exception of maybe one school district, and then they're not doing it throughout their whole schedule. It was more of a focus at the beginning.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the 2018-19 salary schedules and benefits as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We are now on Chromebook bids. Mr. Ryan Gooding.
Thanks for letting me come in and talk with you guys tonight about Chromebooks. Tonight, I'm presenting several bids, and they're all directly related to our Technology Five-Year Plan. And I just want to share a quick review of some of the targets we set in 2015 that helped us track the implementation of that technology plan. So the plan calls for us to provide take-home devices to all students in grades six through 12, provide a stay-at-school device for students in grades K through 5, implement a refresh cycle to replace computers for students and staff in all buildings, and provide each teacher with a laptop. Those were kind of the four big themes of the, the plan in 2015. So with those targets in mind, we conducted several RFPs in April, and the first being for the pricing of 1,500 Google Chromebooks to be used in the third-grade classrooms and to allow us to provide take-home devices for sixth graders and ninth-grade students. Starting in the 2018-19 school year, all middle school students, all freshmen, all sophomores, and all juniors will have a take-home device provided by the district, so that's pretty exciting. RFP requests were sent to 20 vendors, as well as advertising on the district website. Proposals were received from 15 of those 20 vendors, and all proposals were considered in the evaluation process. The bid included price requests for Acer Chromebooks, is what we've kind of standardized on as a district. It helps with buying, purchasing parts, repair, warranty work, and things like that. The bid included price requests for unit price, management console, service price, and warranty price per unit. The Acer Chromebooks were selected for a number of reasons, including the affordable price, long battery life, rugged build, portable nature, and teacher feedback that we've gotten over the past couple of years, that the device fits the instructional needs for the majority of the curriculum that those teachers are providing. Additionally, all devices we cover, will be covered under an accidental device protection warranty. The highlights of this warranty, for those of you guys that haven't heard this before, is that we get one, one repair per device per year. So every device we, we buy gets, we can send it in and get it repaired once a year. We get their battery replaced on each device at least once per year. And then it also covers accidental damage, which has been extremely helpful for students this year. So if they knock over a cup of water on their Chromebook, it's covered and we can get it, we can get it repaired for them, and their parents aren't left with a bill for that. So it's been, that's been nice for lots of students.
I, I just want to interject here. If you recall, we had a, when we first started doing this process, we even discussed potential for a technology fee or something, and many districts charged that. We've made the investment, thanks to your support, to go ahead and buy the extended warranty that essentially allows us not to have to charge families for using the device.
Yeah. So we, we see this, the warranty is kind of a value-add that the district can provide those parents. And like Dr. Monsa says, it helps us reduce fines and fees when parents are rolling in at the beginning of the school year. Everybody knows how much they hate the fines and fees during registration. So the Chromebooks have been enthusiastically supported by our teachers, our students, and they've really become the device of choice in classrooms across the district right now. So tonight, we're asking that you approve the purchase of 1,500 Acer Chromebook computers from CDW for $550,125. And I could take any questions if anybody has any.
Do we? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Have we had any data to show any increase, like test scores due to kids having more access to more information? Have the increase decreased?
So.
Do we have any, since we've been doing this for three, two or three years?
This is, yeah, this is our third year. Next year will be year four, yes. So as far as data directly aligning Chromebooks to increase test scores, I think you're going to struggle to find that with any tool that you use in the classroom. Any one tool is going to, going to be able to say that it increases test scores. I know that, we talked a little bit about textbooks companies earlier this evening. I know that textbook companies are moving towards technology because it allows you to really align the curriculum where the student's at and meet the student at their, at their place in their learning. So whether they're way ahead or way behind or right on target, it can provide that curriculum for them where they need to get it. So we do do walkthroughs with principals. We do go and gather data from principals. And I can tell you, we have not met with a principal yet that has told us that technology doesn't improve engagement inside the classroom.
Well, another thing is, is I just read another article today on computers and kids and mental health, and it's, they're finding, this one article at least, was finding links to higher suicide, depression in teens because they're so glued and they're not socially focused.
Yeah.
So.
And.
And if we're going to be a mental health-minded district, we need, and I know there's parents that do monitor their kids at home, but we need to make sure the teachers monitor not just the computer use in the classroom.
Sure.
Have that interaction, because it goes to the work, back to the work, being workforce-ready. When you graduate high school, even if you don't go on to college, you have to be able to interact with people socially. But, and I have not always agreed with having a one-on-one device, because there's kids in our district also that cannot afford the Wi-Fi to be able to access this stuff. And that goes back to maybe the library having later access hours, one or two nights a week for our students who can't afford that internet access.
And I, I would just tell you that Dr. Volker's department and Carmen Ricker and Jason Walts do a great job of providing that professional development for the teachers. It's one of the benefits that we've had doing this slow rollout of devices. We haven't, we didn't just throw them all out there at once. They've been able to, to bring those teachers in and provide professional development, just to make sure that they're not using the device as a babysitter or, you know, just replacing paper with a, with a computer, that they're actually creating engaging lessons. And I think it's exciting that we're moving forward with online coursework. That's going to be exciting. We're going to be able to hand out computers to kids over the summer. They're going to be able to check out computers and take them home. And the more teachers get, the more, the more they use technology to create engaging lessons for students, the more we provide technology for students to use it, I think it just is going to get better and better.
And we do have a, a strategy in our strategic plans focused on the soft skills that you're speaking to, and, and some of those include having no computer in front of you and direct face-to-face conversations and things of that sort. So we need to train our staff, and there's PD planning for our staff in all these areas, not just use of technology.
And, and I, I would just like to add, of course, the research is important. I think we need to make sure we're comparing apples to apples. And the way that we utilize the computers in the, or whatever the device is, in the classrooms is not necessarily in the same fashion that I think some of those studies are looking at, where they're looking at Facebook and YouTube and, and all of those social media kinds of things. I don't want our public to have the idea that we are just sitting devices in front of kids and that's all they do all day. I think our teachers have some very strategic and innovative and engaging ideas on how those are used in the classroom, and it's not just having kids sitting there staring at them all day.
No, but you take them and you send them home with them and...
Well, the going home is a different point. I just want to make sure our public understands that's not what's happening in the classroom. Now, what, what happens at home is out of our control.
Actually, Ryan, you might touch on the filtering and how that works even at home, just to make sure everybody understands what.
Yeah, so we do provide filtering on and off-campus, so everything we send home is filtered. All emails filtered, so every, every email kids send out, kids in the elementary can't receive emails from anybody that doesn't have a raypeck.org email, so that really helps with, with outside people trying to reach our kids and stuff like that. But we do have constant filtering, constant monitoring of our students.
Do you have website, sorry, do you have website filtering on devices or on the Wi-Fi access here and at home?
Here and at home, yeah. So all, all the traffic at home tunnels back through our district and, and goes out from there. So yeah, we, we monitor all that.
The, the number one device that is causing issues with our youth through a mental health lens, and what most of this research is based on is telephone, is their cellphone. So my son has had one of these devices for several years now, and he does his homework on that and then goes to his phone, right? So the device itself is not, I, I understand what you're saying, but the Chromebooks are not what's going to cause that. Because of the filters that we have on it, they're not going to be able to get into those issues that are causing mental health issues, all of this negative Facebook feedback, go kill yourself, all of this. That, that comes through their phones.
And I, I would like to add, our teachers do a great job of teaching digital skills to kids, and a lot of the kids we're talking about are not getting that at home. So the fact that they are getting that experience on a computer at school with an adult that's teaching them a responsible way to use it, that's modeling responsible ways to use technology, I, I think that's a bonus too of, of having access.
I think technology is a crucial part of them being business-ready. They have to know how to use technology. On the flip side, we do need to educate them on how to stay safe, and we do need to really push soft skills, which I know we are, being a part of the senior drive, I think that's what it was called last night, was phenomenal way to help our students with some of those more soft skills and getting them into that face-to-face conversation. But I don't think taking technology away is the, the way to do it, because there's, they have too much access to it. The, the phone is our number one enemy right now. There's two, that, that's where they're spending most of their time. And so I love that we, as a district, are pushing soft skills. I'd love to push them even harder, but I, as a mental health professional, I'm not seeing the Chromebooks being the major contributor to those issues. I think are the phones.
I just keep reading more and more studies about it, so I have not agreed at all because our kids are not technology literate. Whether they have a phone, a computer, there's just so much access to it, and we're going to hand them more, and it's not just Facebook or whatever. The one study that I read that saw today was just their social interaction is not there, and our bodies and our being human beings were built for that, and they're just so socially checked out.
Yeah. You're talking about mirror neurons, and absolutely, mirror neurons don't work with any kind of technology. Mirror neurons have to be done.
And they just spend more and more time.
With a face-to-face, but that's what the soft skills push is for, is to help develop those mirror neurons. And so this is a huge problem, but I think the biggest problem is making sure we have an accurate diagnosis of what the issues are, what's causing the issues, so then we can genuinely fix it. I agree with your passion around fixing it. I just want to make sure we're addressing the right problems.
I like the idea, I mean, I love that they're using Chromebooks. They're, they're less expensive than notebooks. They're less prone to viruses because you're not downloading tangible things to the device. It's forcing you to use Google Docs where you can, you, you pull things from the web, you alter them, you send them back, push them to your teacher. So as, I guess, being prone to viruses and, and stuff like that, I, I love the idea of everybody having a Chromebook.
Did, just to switch gears just a little bit, did I, do I remember correctly that we now actually have a class, the students learn to work on these now?
Yeah. So we've, we've developed a class at our high school where broken Chromebooks now go to be repaired. So it's a great, it's a great hands-on learning experience for those kids. It's, I would say it's at its infancy, but I, it, it'll, it'll continue to grow, but yeah.
I believe those kids, students are working towards a certificate as well as part of that course, so they'll have a tangible skill to walk out with.
But, but one thing I did write down is, is your concern about access. So I'm going to make sure I go and look, because I know there's lots of different ways people are attacking access for students that don't have it. And we're trying to get a real solid number on families in our district that don't have access right now, I think would be an important first step, and then, and then moving towards who we can partner with to get access for them, because I know there's possibilities out there.
Well, I know we can't control what happens at home, but it goes back to we hand these kids this device, and their parents don't care how much time they spend on it or monitor it or anything. So I have never really been for the whole one-on-one device. I know a lot of districts are going to it, and I have nieces... I know a lot of districts are going to it, and I have nieces that have, in a different district that have used it, they don't even sit and do homework on it, they play games. It's like, what educational function is this? You're sitting there playing games instead of doing what you're supposed to be, the purpose it was meant for.
I had a question on the bids. Um, the, the bid that's being recommended, the 550, there were some others that were lower.
Right.
Could you just go over with this just briefly?
Sure.
I know it's not lowest, it's lowest and best, so what makes this best?
So the HP, we had significant concerns just about the durability of that device. Um, it was not, it was not gonna make it at a four-year high school. Would not have made it through that process, and you can kinda see the price reflects that also. Um, other, other districts have tried that device and lots, they've had lots of issues with it. The, the Lenovo was an interesting one, and we had lots of conversations with them about that. It would have been a change for us as a district, because we have all Acer right now. We're an Acer shop, we work with Acer, Acer comes in over the summer, trains our kids on, in that class that you're talking about, um, to help get that certification. Uh, and it also means you're buying different parts for different, different kinds of. But that, that's not what ended up making our decision, those were all kinda parts of it. But the support that other schools, other districts around us have received from Lenovo has been very poor. So it's poor to the point where the majority of schools that go with Lenovo Chromebooks have worked with local shops, not the, not Lenovo itself. They work with local dealerships who then work through, get paid through Lenovo. And so I just was not comfortable at this point going, going with that device. But it was, we definitely looked at it, because I'm not a Lenovo hater or anything like that, so it, we did look at it.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
I have a question.
Sure.
I'm just curious, do, do our schools have enough wireless strength, I guess for lack of a better term, to support 1500 extra?
So, depends on who you ask. If you ask, if you ask me.
Well, at our Senior Drive project last night, our room had issues.
Yes, if you ask me, we do. If you monitor the traffic and see how much bandwidth they're moving through, we move an incredible amount of data through, through our system. Um, do we always have enough to fulfill what the kids would like, would like to be able to do on their devices? I would say probably not. But we did just finish this week, I think, talked to Linda Portman, and she said we went over, I think, 10,000 online tests that we gave over the last two weeks and had, uh, less than a handful of issues with it, so.
I think that's my biggest concern is with EOC testing and map testing and using those online, are, are the Chromebooks that we have the support to be able to run those without them pausing or, or disconnecting and having to reload.
Yeah, so we work with the board, um, boy, it's been six years ago now. So a long time ago, we did all the infrastructure, infrastructure first. So we, we put in a pretty robust infrastructure. Um, wireless, the attitude and the thirst for wireless in our country is unbelievable, and the expectation for what it's going to be is really high. And so I appreciate our kids for that, because they keep pushing us and wanting us to do better. So we, we try to do better every single day, but I would say, depending on who you ask, they would tell you whether it's, it's enough or not, so. But, but we do collect data on it, we'd be happy to share that data with you guys if you wanna see how much, how much data we move through a building in a month. Uh, we share that bit, data with principals, so they're able to go down and talk to teachers. You know, maybe they're not using it like they want them to, and that, that's actual data they can go down and show them, this is what your colleagues doing, this is what you're doing, similar to that.
And one of the things I just wanted, you talked about, um, any data that we had with regards to higher test scores, and I know we don't really have that, but one thing that I can say just from my standpoint of being in education is that having the ability to get on an electronic device and use it and practice with it in the same form and fashion that you're gonna test with has shown an increase in scores, because they get the opportunity to use that, that product multiple times before they actually get it, and it's not foreign to them when they go online to test. So that is a good thing, I think, is what's great with having these.
I'd like to say we did have a really successful math online test environment. Uh, this was probably our smoothest, uh, testing session where all of our students were taking the math online that we've ever had. So we appreciate our technology department for that and all their hard work, and I think it was very successful.
All right, is there a motion?
I'd, I'd like one more question. Uh, you got the four-year warranty, covers up to four repairs. If one student has four repairs in a year or, you know, two years, is there an opportunity to say, sorry, but you're, you can't have one of these?
So, so that's a great question. So not only that, but we've had students who purposely, maybe they purposely damaged it, they do it on purpose. So at that point, what we typically do is, parents would reimburse the district, and there would be a, a device checked out until the district was reimbursed for the device. It's kind of, um, the way that technology's moving into education though, Paul, it's, it's interesting, because it's kinda like, if, if you hand your kid your, his math textbook, and he rips the cover of it off and hands it back to you. As a district, you're gonna give him another math textbook, right? Maybe you're gonna monitor it a little bit closer, but you're gonna give him another math textbook. That's kinda what Chromebooks and, and devices are turning into. So we're really trying to ride that fine line between, this is an expensive device, and mo- most of our kids are great and do a great job with them, but.
You always have.
Yeah, you always have a few that like to test the, the boundaries for sure. And we work with our principals on those, but, but the law, I guess I gave you a long answer to a short question, so I apologize, but usually the principal works with the student and, and decides, is it appropriate now? Is it not?
Was the warranty, um, was that something that was offered by CDW? Or is that your requirements that those were included in the bids?
Yeah, so at this point, we always put it in the bid. We require a, an ADP warranty be provided by anybody that bids it out, and it's through Acer, so.
One last quick question, charging issues.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any, we're bringing in more?
Yeah, we do.
Well, and.
So the charging issues we have are just like me when I go to work sometimes, and I forget to charge my laptop at home, and I get to work and I'm like, oh my gosh, what am I gonna do? Kids do, kids do the same thing adults do, so.
Have we looked into it all? I was just at national conference, and some of the ways some of them are going is with wireless charging.
So, wireless charging is not at a, it's not a mature enough technology yet where we could really use it for our Chromebooks. Um, the Chromebooks aren't outfitted to, to do wireless charging at this point. It'd take a, an extra dongle, and I don't even know how that would necessarily work, as it works with phones. But, to be continued, because it will be here before long. But, but charging issues, we have talked with the high school about, uh, charging stations. And if you go over to the high school, we have the learning stairs, and they have the ability to plug in in the learning stairs, and they can charge there. But pretty much anywhere you find a plug at the high school, they're typically charging their phones, so. Phones first, Chromebook second, it's usually.
I'm waiting for wireless electricity, actually, so.
That'd be nice. All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve the bid for CDW in the amount of $550,125 for the purchase of 1,500 Acer Chromebooks. This includes all middle school units covered under a three-year accidental device protection warranty and all elementary and high school devices covered under a four-year warranty.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. We are now on desktop, desktop computer bids.
Yes, so we also went through an RFP process for pricing of 400 desktop computers to be used in district classrooms. Uh, we received 20, or we sent out requests to 20 vendors and advertised that also on the district website. We received proposals from six vendors, and while we were happy with the vendor participation, the dealers either did not meet the district budget requirements, the spec of the desktop, or failed to include warranty options that were acceptable to us as a district. So, tonight I'm asking, uh, the board to reject the current desktop computer bids and allow us to resubmit an RFP with clarification regarding necessary warranty and desktop components, and basically the bottom-line dollar that, that bid came back at. We want to try again, so.
Any questions?
I'd take any questions if anybody has any.
Is there a motion?
I move to reject all desktop computer bids.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on pavement, patchwork, and crack seal bid. Dr. Pettingill.
I did have Scott Dobson come with me tonight. His work in this area, um, we just honestly couldn't do most of it, or at least not, not in a timely fashion. And so I appreciate all the work that he gives us. Um, a little quick background, um, as you are all likely aware, the potential capital projects plan for the summer of 18 was presented to the board at the February work session, where we had a Plan A and a Plan B, as funding wouldn't be available for all of our needs, um, unless Prop RP were to pass. So a quick thank you to our voters again for these high-needs projects. Outline both plan, the ones outlined in both plans are now possible. And that's what we're gonna talk about some tonight. Um, this is a busy time of year for planning and procuring bids. As the board approves all large capital project contracts, it's also a busy time for you. Um, last month, in the March meeting, the board approved the site improvement bids from Phillips Pavement for an extensive, for extensive work at Eagle Glen, Ramor Elementary, and Timber Creek. I will be referencing the Phillips bid here in just a moment. So again, we're able to address some high-needs areas due to the passing of Prop RP, from safety to, from safety to rooftop units to a new playground at Timber Creek. While you're being asked to consider numerous actions, um, tonight, we'll have some more for your consideration next month, so you have that to look forward to. Including, including some, some additional safety upgrades. We're hopeful for some cabinetry work at some of our older elementary buildings, um, and some vehicles. So I'll go through the action items fairly quickly this evening. However, please don't hesitate to pause me at any point and ask questions. So, first up, which is up here, that's fine. Um, first is pavement patchwork at Creekmore and East Middle School. Um, there are some maps attached, maps attached in your documentation, um, and with some crack seal work district-wide. This work is important to preserve our previous investments in parking lots as it extends their life and they're extremely expensive to replace. The patchwork, um, and crack seal work, the unit costs were actually bid out. When we bid out the larger project, um, that Phillips won, we also had them submit unit cost at that time, which is displayed within your documents. So we had purposely pre-bid in case we had opportunity to address these other needs. So, um, these bids were then recalculated, and Phillips was actually the low bidder for this work as well. Um, there are a lot of numbers there, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about our patchwork needs and crack seal work.
Any questions, comments? All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve the bid from Phillips for work addressing identified patchwork and crack seal needs in the amount of $70,954.67 plus a 5% contingency for unforeseen issues.
Is there a second?
Second to motion.
All those in favor? Motion passes, thank you. We're now on the pavement, patch, no.
Very good.
Timber Creek.
Timber Creek Playground Equipment.
So it's exciting.
Thank you.
We are, this Timber Creek Playground thing is going to happen, I hope.
Yes.
So, utilizing the Education Plus School District Cooperative Purchasing Program, the playground equipment for Timber Creek can be purchased through Athco at discounts previously established through a formal bid process. Athco has worked with the district in the past, um, they supplied the equipment. Um, they won our, our bid for the equipment for the three playgrounds last year. They're also highly recommended by neighboring districts. Uh, the quoted equipment is comparable to the new playgrounds recently constructed at Eagle Glen and Bridal Ridge in the summer of 17. The total cost of the playground equipment to be purchased is $88,690. Full disclosure, um, this is, um, a, a format or the design of what it'll look like, that is not Timber Creek behind it, just.
Um, any questions, any questions or comments?
Does this, oh, sorry. Does this include like the prep work? Or is that?
The surface bid is next.
Okay.
And last month, as part of the site improvement bid, the, the dirt work that goes up first is, was part of that bid. So it's a three-piece bid, if you will.
Timber Creek was really wanting the playground last year, so we're really glad to be able to give that to them. Are there, is there a motion?
I move to approve the bid from Athco LLC for the purchase and installation of playground equipment at Timber Creek Elementary in the amount of $88,690 plus a 5% contingency.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes, we are now on the surface bid, Timber Creek.
Okay, we would also like to have a nice surface for them, um, under that equipment. And so we're utilizing the National IPA Purchasing Program. Uh, playground surface, um, for Timber Creek can be purchased through SenLawn, uh, again, at discounts previously established through a formal bid process. SenLawn has worked with the district in the past with the three playground surfaces last year, and then also multiple years of athletic turf maintenance we've worked with them on. Uh, in accordance with the capital projects planning and following the work, um, the following work is being recommended to be completed by SenLawn in the amount of $71,868.50.
Is there any questions, comments, is there a motion?
I move to approve the bid from SenLawn for playground surface at Timber Creek Playground in the amount of $71,868.50 plus a 5% contingency for any unforeseen construction conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes, thank you. We are now on high school ladder and roof repair.
I have all of the exciting things. Again, with National IPA Purchasing Program, the district actually worked, or advertised through Chemco to solicit bids for the 18-foot ladder on the roof for the high school and repairing identified areas of concern. In according with our capital projects planning, again, earlier presented, it's being recommended the bid from Cornell be approved in the amount of $21,432.
Any questions or comments, is there a motion?
I move to approve the bid from Cornell to add an additional roof access ladder and repair identified areas of concern of the high school in the amount of $21,432 plus a 5% contingency for any unforeseen construction conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes, we are now on shul, ELC, louver removal and wall repair.
Very good, again, using the National IPA and advertising through Chemco to solicit bids, uh, to remove the louvers at Shirley Early Shoal, Shirley. Never said that. Shoal Early Learning Center, uh, for repair of the, um, or remove the louvers on the side of the gym. They're leaking, that's what's causing the damage to the gym in there. And then obviously putting, repairing that space where they're removed. Also, we have the east exterior wall, the one by the courtyard from the outside leaks. Um, recently we found out during the floods that that will flood our library and storage area back there. So that's, that's also included in part of this work is to, to fix that issue. Um, so, in accordance with our capital projects planning, I'm recommending the bid from Delta be approved in the amount of $30,937.
Any questions?
Did we get all of the other work done at Shoal that we wanted to, during the process?
That's, I'm never gonna give you a positive that we have all the work done we want to get done, but.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
Um, we've, we're in a place that, we're in a good place, but we obviously have more areas that we will continue to address, and it goes into the big list.
Right.
As we can't fix everything at once.
I move to approve the bid from Delta to remove the louvers at Shoal Early Learning Center and repair the east exterior courtyard wall in the amount of $30,937 plus a 5% contingency for any unforeseen construction condition.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes, we are now on Bridal Ridge coping cap replacement bid.
Very good, again, using National IPA and working, and advertising through Chemco to solicit bids, uh, to replace the failing coping cap at Bridal Ridge Elementary. Um, the, the coping cap's just like what it sounds like. It's that cap that comes across, keeps water from getting down into our walls and, and peaks. And in accordance with the project planning, it's being recommended that we accept the bid, or, I'm recommending the bid from Delta to, to, um, work on, do the coping cap work at, for $60,424.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the bid from Delta for labor and materials to replace the roof coping cap at Bridal Ridge Elementary in the amount of $60,424 plus a 5% contingency for any unforeseen construction conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes, we're now on Bridal Ridge Roof Membrane Repair.
Very good, again, with the National IPA Purchasing Program and advertising through Chemco, um, or, sorry, working, we want to utilize Chemco slash WTI, which is Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated, for purchase of labor and materials for the roof membrane repair needs at Bridal Ridge Elementary. Again, as part of our capital projects planning, uh, presented earlier, it is being recommended the bid from Tim, Chemco slash WTI be approved in the amount of $29,249 for this work.
Quick question.
Yeah.
All of these things, are they coming out of this year's budget or next year's?
On, on next year's budget.
On next year's, okay.
And just to confirm, this is in lines with our strategic planning?
Absolutely.
It's not taking away salary increases from our teachers?
No, as part of the levy increase, we had anticipating and putting 20% of the funds towards additional projects of this sort. Uh, so the Plan A, Plan B, we had about a million dollars, which is more of our typical. Plan B is closer to two, $2 million, and so this is some combination. Some of these were under the Plan A, and some of these are under Plan B, but collectively they're within that plan.
And just as a quick point of history, when the district, um, eight years ago went through the budget reduction process, uh, since that time, our capital spending has been significantly reduced at about $1 million per year, whereas it used to be about 1.5 or more, even 2 million per year. So we're doing a lot of catch-up, and that's why we asked for that 20%, and that's why we have a gaggle of bids.
Yeah, um, i- is there any way we can take pictures of all this and document it, and then somehow get out to the public, thank you, Raypack, for voting for the levy? Here's what we've done, you know, we've raised teacher salaries, we've raised base salaries, You know, we've raised teacher salaries, we've raised base salaries. Here's a new playground, here's improvements. I mean, just.
Don't forget about the little things like the road sign.
Just to thank the community.
Absolutely.
That's a great idea.
That's a very good idea.
I'm thinking of the road signs where you see progress as promised.
Right.
Kind of like the same idea.
At the schools?
That would be great.
We said we were going to do this with the money, and here it is.
I love it.
Unfortunately, some of these things you can't really see.
Well, that's the thing I was going to say, is that people will forget some of these little things.
Well, I think the membrane and the louver would be great.
We need to picture that anyway, just to know what it is.
All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve the bid from Chemco WTI to repair the roof membrane at Bridle Ridge Elementary in the amount of twenty-nine thousand two forty-nine, plus a five percent contingency for any unforeseen construction condition.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. We're now on rooftop unit proposal.
Again, based on our earlier presented capital improvement plan, multiple rooftop units have surpassed their lifespan and need to be replaced. They're, they're not efficient, and they're, they're, they don't have the ability to meet the set points in hot and cold months. Anyone that works in Innovation Center and our, or the library in the Ray Peck Academy building knows, it's not always comfortable in there. So that's part of this being addressed. Specifically, sixteen units at three different schools, at Peculiar Elementary, High School, Ray Peck Academy, that's sixteen total, are the highest need. Our, our specification was designed around Linux, as this is the standard equipment used throughout the district. The Linux units will be purchased per board policy DJF as a sole source provider, using our education discount direct from Linux. The cost of the units will be one hundred and fifty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The district personnel will, will be self-performing the installation while subcontracting a couple of small things, crane, integration of automated controls. And I just want to comment, we have quite a skill set within in-house. If you go back when there was nineteen units in two thousand fifteen put on Timber Creek, the labor for installation was a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars on that project three years ago. And our guys are doing it in-house for just the cost of the crane and then the automation, which we would have to pay for anyway. So I think that giving some, some props to our maintenance department for all they do is pretty, pretty impressive.
Does the manufacturer have any warranty concerns with us installing it versus a company? Okay. What is the average age of the units we're taking out, do you know?
They, they're listed on the capital projects plan, but Scott can probably tell you.
Yeah, they were ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine timeframe.
Excellent job maintaining them to last this long.
Yes, thank you to our maintenance department. You do an amazing job. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the proposal from Linux Industries Incorporated for sixteen rooftop units in the amount of one hundred fifty-three thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. We are now on building automation proposal.
We want them to work once we put them up there. Control Services Company, or CSC, is the only automated logic dealer in the area. Automated logic, logic is what the district utilizes to monitor and control the systems. The equipment and labor will be purchased through CSC as a single-source provider. With replacement of rooftop units at RPHS, RPA, and Peculiar Elementary, CSC will need to update the associated infrastructure. There's also automation needs at RPHS, including site lighting, room sensors and equipment like water heaters, boilers, hoods, water circulation pumps, all of those neat things are all controlled through this automated logic. And then, and again, as we outlined in the capital projects planning, it's being recommended the proposal from CSC be approved in the amount of fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars, plus contingency.
Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the proposal from Control Services Company to update the required software for new rooftop units in the amount of fifty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars, plus a five percent contingency.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
We're almost there.
We are now on building, no.
Camera, intercom.
Camera, intercom, fire panel, and access control.
So putting all of these together, these are all based around safety. In our ongoing effort to improve safety and security throughout the school, the schools, numerous equipment upgrades are needed. All Systems was awarded a contract with the district in June of two thousand seventeen through a competitive process for, for the upgrades and installation of equipment, along with monitoring services for fire and intrusion. The equipment and labor will all be purchased with All Systems per that board policy DJF as a single-source provider. So I'm going to go quickly through each of those. The intercom, All Systems is actually the only authorized distributor of telecenter in, in Missouri or Kansas, which is the interactive intercom software utilized by the district. And that actually allows you to use a PA remotely into the buildings that have telecenter. And it's very neat. Cameras Exact Vision is the software platform being utilized by the district for surveillance cameras as we go through an upgrade, which allows security footage to be viewed remotely from anywhere by anyone with a password at one website, which would be critical in an emergency sys, in an emergency setting. All Systems is an authorized dealer for exact vision. So, and we did check with Henderson Engineering and compared the prices to make sure we were getting a good deal. And All Systems is actually about half price of the low end of their window they gave us, so I was happy to see that. Fire panels, we discussed this in the past. The fire panels at the warehouse and the Ray Peck Academy are, are antiquated and failing. The panels in both locations are currently EST devices. All Systems is an authorized EST distributor and installer, and by remaining with EST, only the head units will have to be replaced, as there will not be a need to replace the field devices like horn strobes, pull stations, detectors. So that's a, a big savings. Finally, access control is being monitored by All Systems, and they will be upgrading our access control district-wide to an onsite server-based system. This will actually save the district money by eliminating a monthly fee that we're currently being charged per door. So I also have listed there breaking down the prices, the breakdown in cost for each of the main projects being recommended, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the proposal from All Systems to complete identified work with camera, intercom, fire panel repair, and district-wide access control upgrade in the amount of one hundred sixty-eight thousand four hundred seventy-three dollars, plus a five percent contingency for any unforeseen construction conditions.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you, Dr. Pettingill.
We're now on committee reports. Are there any committee reports?
Professional Development Committee met. They're working hard on their pre-service PD plan for this next school year and the budget for the next school year. They're also really targeting making sure that their professional development plan is in line with the strategic plan. They're working really hard on trying to balance building time versus classroom time versus district time, and they're in service, or they're pre-service. So they're very excited, very passionate about it, you can always tell, so they're working very hard on that. I had a board of directors meeting in Columbia. We now have, for the first time in a long time, Missouri has a voting delegate on the National School Boards Conference, or organization. So that'll be an interesting perspective to have and getting more feedback from the national level. Also, our executive director, Melissa Randall, is one of ten nationwide executive directors working on a safety and security conglomeration. And it's because Missouri's has so far advanced from a lot of the other states, as far as the stuff that they have. I, I went to national conference about two weeks ago. I got fifteen and a half CEUs of class, so there wasn't much sleep there, but that's okay. I have sat and talked to Dr. Volker and Dr. Pettingill and with Pam on some different things that we'll bring up as it comes along, that I think will do good for us. One of the things, and it kind of goes back to what you were saying earlier, with board docs, there's a function in there. All of our agenda items, we can tag back to our strategic plan, so that anyone could come in and see, and like they wanted to see teacher salaries. They could go in and pull everything we've done on teacher salary and pull up all those agenda items and go back and look at it if they wanted to. So that will give us more transparency with the public to show we've done what we said with a lot of the different things.
The system allows for that?
Yes. Correct, Pam? She told me yes before.
Yeah, no, no, that's awesome.
We have more research to do, but I think that's certainly an option for us.
So, and I mean, we could do a strategic plan, and then even the action steps, not into the strategies, or the strategies, not the action steps. We don't need to go that low. Talked a lot of safety and security with Dr. Pettingill that we'll bring up. I put a request in, as you know, to have security and safety as a quarterly agenda item, just to kind of get an update maybe on some of the things we've done that we didn't have an action item on, or something our buildings have found that works, you know, different things, so that the public sees that we are, even though we already are, but shows that we're strategically talking about it on a consistent basis. Let's see here. You know, it's always amazing to go to these things, some of the things we think we really struggle with, we're really doing okay when you get to comparing this to some of these other states. I talked with some school board members from Louisiana. If they were to complete all of their buildings' maintenance and get where it needed to be, one billion dollars. The average age of their building was nineteen sixty-two. They just built their first high school in like forty-two years. So we're doing okay. You know, and I specifically chose my classes along with our strategic plan as well, safety and security, mental health, teachers, you know, so I really targeted the classes that I went to. And you know, I, I value doing my own PD, that's why I'm here, and I want to do a better job of it.
Any other committee reports?
Yes, the, the mental health, well, the Curriculum Committee, which is now focusing on counselors. There we go. Had our meeting. And that committee consists of, I believe it's counselors from each of the grade levels, Dr. Volker, Dr. Hoffman, Dr. Barr. Okay. And. Yes, yes, so, yes, well, very well-rounded committee. And it was very interesting. I'm very excited about the work that group is doing, because, you know, counselors, you know, that fits right in with mental health, obviously. And I was very happy to see that in that group, the discussions, it was very creative, very open-minded, thinking outside of the box in terms of defining or even redefining how we look at mental health and how the counselors fit into that. And they were talking about their three priority areas, and really looking at those and thinking about what fits, you know, with counselors and with the objectives, and how does mental health fit into that? So I'm very excited to see where that's going and what kind of recommendations will come out of that.
Anything else? I know that. And we're now on superintendent's report.
Several items I want to share with everybody this evening. I know we're winding down, but I'll be brief as I can. First of all, on behalf of the entire district, I want to offer our condolences to Lance Hayes's family. Obviously, losing a, a young person is always extremely difficult, and so we're sad for them, but keeping them in our thoughts and prayers. I want to thank our staff at the high school in particular for supporting our students and each other through this, this week. It's been a challenge for them, and obviously, it's a busy time of the year, but they've really come together to help each other, and I really value that. We are moving into May, it's, we're down to the final stages of our school year. The first full week of May is when we celebrate the Teacher Appreciation Week, and we do that as a Staff Appreciation Week across our district. So there'll be a wide range of celebrations across the district for our staff and the recognition of their efforts throughout the course of the year. And I encourage all of our parents and patrons to send a note or, or something, a thought to staff members that mean, mean, means something extra in their children's lives, and I know they really appreciate that, especially this time of the year, as we wind down to the end. I want to congratulate all of our nominees for PTA Volunteer of the Year. The work of our volunteers is invaluable across the district, whether they're PTA members or Booster Club members or just, just parents or patrons that like to volunteer throughout the district. Our PTA Council is responsible for doing that recognition, and that event was this evening. And so we had to leave that event to come start our meeting this evening, but we do have the winner in the audience. Joyce Noah was their recognized Volunteer of the Year this year. So we will have to invite her back next month when we have a certificate ready to give her, so put it on your calendar, Joyce. Always thankful for all that you do, and Tara is president of the PTA Council, Tara Deepenbrock, and they, they do a great job organizing and recognizing staff, not just this time of year, but throughout the year. Also want to thank a couple other partners, our Sunrise Optimists Club, Raymore Peculiar Sunrise Optimists Club had an academic excellence banquet on Sunday evening that several of the board members attended. They recognized over fifty-one students, I believe, from the high school who have done exceptionally well in their academics. And so we appreciate that partnership. Another partner is our Ray Peck Public School Foundation. They had the Teacher of the Year and Support Staff of the Year event a few weeks ago. We thank them for sponsoring that. And of course, Brett Benneke is our Teacher of the Year, and Kelly Wyda is our Support Staff Employee of the Year, and we've already shared that with the community, but we appreciate the foundation and their efforts. Some of our student activities of note, shout out to our Theater Department for winning yet another state title in one act play. I think Mr. Schnacky mentioned that they are now tied with one of the Springfield High Schools for the most ever in the state, and so the goal is to pass them next year. So our TSA students and our Journalism students performed exceptionally well at their recent state-level competitions. Our band and choir students are participating this week in their state-level solo and small ensemble groups, and I expect to have several one ratings, and we'll have all of those students in the next couple of months, or as many can make it to our board meeting for recognitions. Somebody mentioned the Senior Drive Event last night. I think that was the first year we put an event like that together for English four students, and it was really impressive, I thought. And, and for those students, learning some social skills and soft skills, if you will, in terms of presenting and having conversations about their projects was really important, in addition to what they learn by doing their projects. Right now, everybody's working really hard on finishing up our state assessments. We've been a couple of weeks into that plan now, got a little bit more to go. And of course, everybody's gearing up towards graduation on May eighteenth. It's, it's the highlight of the year. There's two for me. One is first day of school with the kindergartners and the last day for graduation with the seniors. Of course, everything else that happens in between is very important, but those are the highlights for me. And finally, I want to thank the patrons of the district as a whole for supporting Proposition RP. It's going to mean so much to us as a district and our students and staff. We're thankful for that ongoing community support, and we'll do our absolute best to put those resources to use the way we intended to and the way we described with our strategic plan. So we've got our marching orders, and we're going to do our best to live up to them. So thank you for that support. Thank you.
We're now on board comments, Board of Education comments. Any comments?
Being a judge last night was amazing thing to watch what our kids can do. You know, people say they want school choice. We've got a lot of choices in our school. And being on the Innovation Committee, watching some of our teachers put that whole thing together, and their passion and their excitement about helping their students succeed, no matter what they're doing, is, is really evident if you talk to our teachers and see their passions in it. And then we had our, our mid-season, mid-session, Cass County Kids First a couple of weeks ago. I'm thinking because of somebody else's issues in this state, could be anybody, that education may kind of slide by without any major disruptions this year. We're kind of worried, or watching the piece of legislation about moving school board elections to November. We're kind of afraid that one may be a guinea pig for appeasing some others, but there's some people trying to attach some amendments on there to where hopefully it won't pass.
Any other comments?
I just want to congratulate the Special Education Basketball Team again. This was their third year in winning the state championship, so we are going to look for a four-peat next year. So that is a challenge to our coaches, and thank you for your time that you guys dedicate to those students, because they also need to be involved in athletics and included in that. So, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, we are now on calendar of events. We've got May second, MSBA Region Four meeting. Do we have four able to go to that? So two. So we need two more? You've got it, so we've got three, so we just need one more? Okay. Staff Appreciation Breakfast, May seventh through eleventh. May sixteenth is Senior Award Night. Graduation, everyone's going to make graduation? Yes. Good. May twenty-fourth, regular board meeting. May twenty-fifth, last day of school. The conference, the, on June second through third, has everyone let Pam know on that? So she can get the reservations on that. Cass County Kids First on June eighth, and then our board retreat is June thirteenth.
On June eighth, we'll be barring that they don't have a special session.
Got it. Okay. So keep, so be, yeah, be aware of the change of that. Other than that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.